I'd like to call to order the beating of the Chattanooga City Council for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Councilman Henderson, would you please lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance? Your invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me in prayer? God, we just pray that you would lead us and guide us, help us to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the people of this city. In your name we pray, amen.
Karen, are we waiting or? Counsel, can I go ahead and get a motion on the minutes, please?
Go ahead.
All right, minutes will stand without objection. Okay, you want us just to keep going?
Yes, come on, sorry about that.
We're expecting Mayor Kelly. Okay, so Counsel, let's take a look at our agenda for today. We don't have any items on first reading, but we do have some items, or excuse me, we don't have anything on final reading, we have several items on first reading. Under Public Works, there are two items for District Two. I'd like to point out that we will be reading the alternate version of item A. And as listed for item B, that is Planning Version Two, which reflects the changes we discussed in the agenda meeting last week. So both of those, Counsel, are ready to go from the perspective of District Two. For resolutions, item A, under Finance, Councilman Elliott has an appointment and he will be a little bit late today, but he said that he is intending to bring a text amendment to item A. Phil, do you have any additional information you would like to share with us right now?
Yes, we were discussing whether there could be some extension of the time period for 2024 taxes, but I believe that the folks in the Comptroller's Office have said that it would only work for 25 taxes going forward here, so just want to be aware of that. So that may alleviate your need for a change. You do need to get the tax rate amount increased to $60,000.
Okay, so Counsel, we may anticipate some kind of amendment from Councilman Elliott, but we won't know till we get there. All right, so we do have a resolution to appoint Terry Knowles as Fire Chief this afternoon. Let's see, we've got Councilwoman Burrs on the board.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I mean Chairwoman, I just wanted to back up to the resolution about the senior tax freeze.
Okay.
Mr. Attorney, I had mentioned that I had asked to co-sponsor that and it didn't make it to the agenda, so I just wanted that on the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you're in support?
Yes, I am.
Well, let's see, I think who does that leave out? At least me, I'd be happy to be a co-sponsor, we could all do it.
Yes.
Sponsored by the City Council of Chattanooga, as seen by the unanimous vote, I anticipate we will have. Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, this one is about Mayor's Office, item B Resolution Confirming Mayor Kelly's Appointment of Terry Knowles as Fire Chief. I did want to make just my statement on the record, while I respect the individual selected, I have concerns about the selection process that I've discussed with both the administration as well as Assistant Chief Knowles. With that in mind, I remain fully committed to supporting the Chattanooga Fire Department, its personnel, the incoming chief, in their continued efforts to serve our community with excellence. However, I cannot in good conscience endorse the process that got us to this point. And again, I've already spoken to the administration about that process as well as spoken to Assistant Chief Knowles earlier about it as well. So with that in mind, I will be abstaining from that vote, but I did want that on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Counsel, Vice Chairwoman Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I personally minded in reference to the Mayor's Office Resolution for confirming Chief Knowles as well. I personally have this deep disappointment with the process. It has nothing to do with Chief Noel himself. I support him and whatever endeavors he's bringing forth 100%, but it was the process. The interview process was flawed to me from what I had presented to me. I did make my concerns known to administration. I have not personally had a conversation with Chief Knowles or the other applicants as well, and I did that intentionally before I knew that what I was going to do. So I wanted to make it fair and impartial and even across the board, but it was flawed. I made my concerns known to the administration and several things were out of sync. When you're in the middle of an interview process, to change the direction in the middle of is not a good look. Personally, if I had to place blame, I would put the blame in the direction of whoever led this process of this interviewing. That's where, if I had to place it, that's where I would place it. But it actually does not seem, I guess, fair, that it might have been damaging, it might have been, some trust might have been lost in reference to the concerns that I had, and to me, they were major concerns. And like I said, I did make that known, but it's a council amendment, it's Vice Chair. I believe that we should always do the best that we can do in a process like this. So I am 100% on board in us going back and re-looking at this process and lining something up that would be concrete in anyone that ever has to go through another process like this. That it would be no questions about it, no issues, no concern. And once again, I know nothing of Chief Knowles, like I said, other than having to have spoke with him just to say hi, but I just, the process, the process was definitely not good. So I will be abstaining as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hill. I want to echo some of the sentiment from Councilwoman Dotley and Vice Chairwoman Noel, in that I agree that the process was flawed and may not have necessarily garnered the most qualified candidate. And I did have the opportunity to meet with Chief Terry Knowles, and I expressed those concerns to him, and it was a very pleasant conversation. I think he is qualified to be in that position, and I do plan to support him in that vote today. I believe it is the obligation of the mayor to put forth those candidates and for us to express our concern, but the responsibility of the outcomes of the performance of the administrators, I believe falls back into the administrative branch, and as an oversight capacity, I think it is within our right to express those concerns and to ask course correction, which is what I'm hearing from Vice Chairwoman Noel. To the Office of the Chief, Operating Office, we have had those conversations. We do need a more uniformed process, and I think that is fair. I would even go as deep as saying that when we have minority candidates, that we make sure that the process is inclusive and that all aspects of qualifications are considered. I believe that there were minority candidates who could or were just as qualified as Terry Knowles that did not proceed to that position, but I also believe that when you're hiring people, you consider all aspects, including qualifications, education, but what is also the right fit. And I think it's hard hiring, and I think you all did the best you could, but can do better. So with that, I want to express that, Mandy, to you, we have a really great relationship, I know you are listening, but what I would like to say to Chief Knowles is that please, through our conversations, I don't know where he is, but I want to look at him, there we go, you, thank you, sir, for standing up and taking on this challenge in politics. You know, your job is to protect us, and I know sometimes politics get a little hairy, but I believe that your heart posture is to do the right thing towards people in your department to make sure they have the opportunities to be in leadership positions. And I would like to, you made that commitment to me, and for that, I will support you to be our next police chief, Fire Chief, sorry, Chambers, wherever you are, but I just want to be on the record to express that I agree with the sentiment of the Vice Chair and Councilwoman Dotley, that we must improve our hiring process to ensure inclusivity and just a uniformed process to make sure we do indeed have the most qualified candidate. Thank you, Vice Chairwoman Noel, I mean Chairwoman Hill.
Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I wanted to address, and maybe the Council as a whole, I was part of the process. I sat in on the second interview committee. When we received the candidates, it had been narrowed to three, and I don't remember, I think they started with six and narrowed it to three. We were in that second interview process. Let me say this, at least the part of the process that I was involved in, I felt like was very fair. I think it produced the top candidate. And I know that Chief Noel scored in the top position in the first interview process. He scored first in the second interview process. And we were given a scoring matrix that had criteria attached to it. Anywhere from a one was, you know, gave no answer, to the five was knocked it out of the park and everything in between. So there was criteria attached to each numbering system that we would give a Fire Chief. And I can, I will tell this Counsel this, that from sitting in on that committee, I believe that the most qualified person was chosen. Had I been mayor and given the same matrix, I would have chosen Terry Knowles to be the next Fire Chief as well. In my opinion, I believe the process worked properly, and I think it produced the correct results. And happy to ask any questions or answer any questions from there, but don't overtalk this.
Vice Chairwoman Noel. Okay.
So Councilman Henderson, did I understand you to just say it was a scoring card from one to five? In the committee that you were in? Hmm, okay, that's interesting, because I was told that there was no scoring card.
Yes, ma'am, there was.
I asked that question. I asked if there was a scale from one to five. Did I not ask that question?
All I can, Madam, all I can tell you is in the committee that I sat in on, there was a scoring matrix that had criteria assigned to each number, that we could fairly, and you know, judge the answers that each candidate gave.
Okay, because that was one of my concerns. I asked that. I asked if it was a scoring system, and they told me, no, there was not a scoring system from one to five. I asked intentionally one to five.
And now, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that the first committee also had a scoring matrix as well. I guess similar, very similar to the one that the second committee had.
That's correct. There were three rounds.
Yeah, I think the third round was just given a recommendation. I don't think the third round was given a scoring matrix. I think the third round was community leaders that just basically gave recommendations.
That's correct. For the third round, there was no score, and it was just, you know, for the external group that came in, there was no score for them. They wrote notes and they provided their thoughts and recommendations. The first two rounds did have scores, one to five, and each individual person scored those, and those were tallied up. And in fact, for the first two rounds, every individual had Terry Knowles listed as number one. And they were all, there were also a lot of diversity in those rounds as well, from a lot of different ways, different departments, different, you know.
I'm sorry. Okay, so one to five was scored?
Yes, ma'am, in the first two rounds.
First two? Okay, okay. So I'm curious as to why nobody knew that. Once again, you just get a half a glass when you need a fool.
I apologize that you didn't receive that. I know we, I shared it with Chairman Henderson, and with others, I don't know if it was shared with the rest of the Council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Yes.
Well, then I need to have another conversation offline. Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel, we have Mayor Kelly here. I'd like to go ahead and finish the conversation about today's agenda. Do we have any questions about the Office of the City Attorney or the Parks, Public Works, and Wastewater or purchasing items for today? If so, please hit your light. Councilman Elliott, please hit your light again. Councilman Elliott.
Chairwoman, this isn't in particular of those two items, but it does pertain to today's agenda, is it appropriate?
Right, yes, to go back to the tax freeze item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, please.
I would like to announce, I would like to propose a resolution, excuse me, an amendment today to our resolution that will open the senior tax freeze application period from the time that we pass the resolution until September 12th. I've consulted with administration and particularly the CFO and his office. The 12th is a time period that they feel comfortable, that they feel like they can process applications for the tax freeze and also get the tax bills out in a timely fashion. This would allow us to protect seniors and those who would now be approved under this program, under the new income limits, and to lock their tax rate, their tax bills in before any particular tax rate may change that.
And that, does that work for?
That will work for 2025 taxes, but not for any period for 2024, which are already passed due at this point. So it would work for the coming year.
Okay, great, we will look forward to that amendment. Okay, looks like I don't have any questions about purchases, so let's take a pause here. Mr. Mayor, thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you all for having me. Let me first just say that we're very pleased to have gotten through the difficult process of finding a new Fire Chief, but just to be clear, ultimately, that was my decision. And we had three excellent finalists, and again, it's no different than a footrace, right? I mean, if it's a finish by nose, there has to be one winner. We have to have one Fire Chief. I believe any of the finalists could have done the job and done it well. We've done a great job of cultivating talent in the department, and the rest of those folks have bright futures within the city and the department, but there can only be one, and that was my decision. So I'm ultimately responsible for that, so you can hold me responsible for that. I do think that Chief Knowles will make a very fine chief. But I'm also here because, you know, I'm understanding some committee meetings earlier today, you know, the comments I made last week in our budget meeting may have hit some folks wrong, and I just wanted to say that, you know, if that offended anyone, I am sorry. I certainly didn't mean to threaten anyone, but I think it's important also that you understand how hard we work every day at city government, and how hard I work, you know, as mayor to drive this city forward. You know, the One Chattanooga Plan is not a political document, it's a strategic document, it's a blueprint for investment for the city, and inflation is very, very real. This is not everything that I want or need as a city that we're proposing. I mean, again, I think, I hope we're past the point of debate where we can acknowledge that our police and our fire need and deserve the raises that we have talked about, and that is 65% of the ask. Another 17% is more paving, and that will leave us with only a $285 million backlog in paving. And the balance, you know, are of strategic investments to move the city forward. So again, if I got a little carried away, I apologize, but I'm, you know, again, I don't come to work for my health. I come to work to make this the best city it can possibly be, and I have a very short period of time to get it done. I've only got four years left, and I very frankly don't want to spend that time working with 75 cents when I need a dollar. And that, very frankly, is where we are from 2021 to present. Thank you. I'm happy to address any questions, ma'am.
I do not have any lights on the board. Thank you, Mayor, for your words. I do, now I have a light on the board. Councilman Elliott.
I promise I'll be quick. Mayor, I do appreciate you coming down and clearing that up. I've said this before, and I mean it. I hope we all can continue to move forward to make sure we do what's best for our first responders and for our citizens. So I appreciate you. It's not an easy to do, thing to do in politics, but I appreciate you coming back to clean it up.
Well, you're quite welcome, and let me just say, you know, unfortunately, the way the deck is stacked, you know, you've all heard the saying of, you know, what rolls downhill, well, this is where it lands. You know, the state has a self-correcting mechanism for generating revenue and sales tax. We're all paying 20% more in state taxes, we just never feel it, pennies on the dollar. Because if inflation goes up and we're paying nine and a quarter percent of a buck 26 versus of a dollar, we just paid more money, just a little bit at a time. Federal government, of course, has the privilege of printing money and running massive deficits, which they continue to do, but folks, this is where the buck stops, your desk and my desk. And it's unfortunate politically, but it is what it is. And, you know, again, my job, and I would submit that your jobs, are to do what's best to drive this city forward, and I believe me, I have nothing else in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, let's take a look at next week's agenda, please. We have several planning items next week, but I will remind you, we are going to have a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting momentarily, so hold your questions for those items, please, until that committee. So there's some economic development resolutions as well as public works and wastewater. Please hit your light if you have any questions. All right, looks like we're good there. Let's go ahead and take a look at future considerations, please. All right, I'm not seeing any lights for future considerations, so I think we are good to go with that. It would appear, administration, that the explanatory notes are really being helpful there, so thank you very much for that innovation. All right, I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Burrs to lead our Planning and Zoning Committee, and I would add, Counsel, that we will need a 20-minute attorney-client privilege meeting after this session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting to order, and may I get a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting? Okay, thank you, Counsel. All right, Karen, hello, welcome. So hopefully, you all had a chance to look over the proposed agenda for today for the cases that are coming up on first reading next week. My goal, with the exception of one matter, is to ask Karen is to ask Karen to go over those that were in the shaded. Mine is pink. I don't know what color everybody else's is. But is there, are there any other cases other than what's shaded that you all want to hear about? Okay.
I'm looking at the bottom.
Sorry. Okay, good. Well, Karen, let's proceed and just start with A, please.
Okay, and I, it's not on the sheet, but I do want to note that case 2025-0109, which is item B, was on the agenda, was 1100 block. It's the, it's the 1,000 block of Lupton Drive. And so that's been sent to the city attorney's office for correction. So I just wanted to flag that with, and a citizen noted that for us, that we've got that wrong, so.
It is corrected. For next week is 1,000 block. Is that okay?
Yes. And all the Planning Commission materials should show the 1,000 block also.
Okay.
So the first case, this case was recommended for denial by Planning Commission and staff. And this is at 425-25 Hickson Pike. Their request is to rezone from CC Commercial Corridor Zone to the IL Industrial Light Zone. And the proposed use is storage. And just to orient you, this is about a block and a half south of Eli Road. And then Highland Pediatrics is the medical office building shown to the west. So just for comparison, the existing zone is intended to accommodate commercial development along corridors. This is probably most similar to the old C2 Commercial Zone. The requested zone is the IL Light Industrial Zone, which is intended to accommodate industrial activities, can also have select services or commercial uses. And the applicant has storage, storage containers on the site that aren't allowed in the current CC zone. So I'm going to fast forward for a moment. These are the storage containers that triggered the need for the rezoning. These are not allowed in the current zone, but these are allowed in the IL Light Industrial Zone. So there's no recent zoning history for this site. And the site is surrounded by non-residential uses, including commercial and office. So the Light Industrial Zone allows uses that are not permitted in the CC zone, such as vehicle repair, research and development and light industrial uses. There's no IL Zone property immediately surrounding the site. And this is mostly a mix of commercial zoning along the Hickson Pike corridor. The Hickson-North River Plan recommends a medium business mix, which is really kind of regional commercial, neighborhood commercial, office residential and similar uses. So again, this is the site. If you look to the rear, you can kind of see the little, a little bit of the hint of that red storage building. And then just to orient, Highland Pediatrics is behind those trees. So staff noted the site is surrounded by non-residential uses, but it's not compatible, the request is not compatible with the adopted land use plan as there's no industrial zoning near the site. The IL Zone will introduce a higher intense development form, including such things as a maximum height and additional uses. So staff recommended deny. There was opposition present. There was concern about the storage units themselves and their appearance on the site. Planning Commission determined the request is not compatible with the plan, development form and adjacent land uses. And this comes with a recommendation from Planning Commission to deny.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, I'm going to need your help.
Just push to the top.
This one?
On top.
This one?
Nothing on the outside.
I'm live. That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Chairwoman Hill, thank you for this presentation. Would you please send me the slides specific to this case? I want to confirm one thing. The UGC parcel that was rezoned a couple of years ago, that was rezoned for residential use. What I'm not remembering is if it was conditioned to residential use only. I, I feel like we probably did give it several conditions.
It does, and I can read those.
Okay, yes, please.
That was rezoned in 2022 to UGC with conditions, maximum height of three stories, residential, retail and office use only, all other uses including but not limited to auto-oriented uses, adult-oriented establishments, self-service storage facilities, wholesaling with accessory warehousing and hospitals shall be prohibited. So those are still on the property even though it's CMU1 now.
Okay. Gosh, you guys, do y'all remember back in the UGC days when we were doing all those conditions? Last in the past. Yay for new zoning. Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have for that. That's, this one's, we've got a land owner who would like to use their property differently, but certainly we have, we want to avoid spot zoning. So thank you. That's all.
I see no other lights. Any other comments on this matter before we move on? Okay, thank you, Karen.
The next case, case 54, was also recommended for denial by staff and Planning Commission. This one's a little bit different. This is at 7458-7460 Pinewood Drive, which is about 2,000 feet east of Gun Barrel. There was opposition present at the April Planning Commission meeting. There was a deferral by Planning Commission. The applicant was not present at the July meeting, nor have we been able to contact him. So staff had a discussion with him right after the April meeting. There is, we've reached out again recently. We have two email addresses and a phone number, tried to get ahold of the applicant and have not been able to do so. And so the applicant was not present at the July Planning Commission meeting, which I think influenced the decision. But I'll briefly hit the high points for this. Their request is to rezone to RN2 Residential for proposed use for townhomes. And the site's surrounded by single-unit detached residential and institutional land uses. So the sites in the East Brainerd Area Plan, which recommends suburban residential use, and the request is not compatible with that place type recommendation. The request is not compatible with adjacent single-unit detached land uses and development form. And staff recommended denial. There was opposition, as I mentioned, at April Planning Commission meeting, but Planning Commission determined in July that the request is not compatible with the plan, development form and adjacent land uses. Excuse me. And Planning Commission recommends deny for this. But the past day, two, past two days, we have done, we have been reaching out to remind them that there is a meeting coming up. And in this case, I'll note the applicant is also the property owner.
I see no lights on this matter. Didn't hit your light. Did you hit your light? Oh, yes, she did. Thank you.
Sorry.
I, I just wanted to see, is the applicant here? This meeting? Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't help.
We'll try, we'll continue to try between this week and next. But staff has confirmed they've made a really good-hearted effort, so.
How, how many acres was that?
It is, it's a pretty small site. Total one minute. It is a little less than one acre.
Okay.
And the proposed, they were proposing 18 to 27 units.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. I see no other lights on this matter. So Karen, I would like to, for you to go over E0089. And the only reason why, the reason why I think it'd be good to go over this is, is a good example of a matter that was denied by staff, but we were able to come up with some conditions that I think is amenable to the community and will protect also that area of Bonnie Oaks Drive. So I think it would be a good example just to go over, especially for some of the new folks. Thank you.
So this is a request to rezone 7117 Bonnie Oaks Drive from the RN16 Residential Zone to the CNT Neighborhood Transition Commercial Zone for an office. And there's not any zoning history for this site. The property to the southwest was denied by City Council in 2006 for rezoning to office. So this was heard at Planning Commission deferred. So there, a lot of these slides are just because there's so much activity and discussion at Planning Commission. One of the items that came up at Planning Commission was although the site is zoned residential, there is commercial zoning down closer to Silverdale Road. That's across from Silverdale Baptist Academy. But there is a car lot and a kennel in the area. Those do appear to be grandfathered in possibly with an annexation from a long time ago. But just to note that there is kind of a mix of items going on in the area. So again, the site that, I'm showing that car lot and animal kennel. But then zooming out, Amazon is just to the north of the site. So just thinking about that Bonnie Oaks corridor, we've got that commercial note at Silverdale. And then predominantly residential zoning with those two non-conforming commercial properties. Site is immediately surrounded by a single-unit residential. So the requested CNT Neighborhood Commercial Zone is intended to accommodate low-intensity office and service uses as well as single-unit dwellings. It also accommodates conversions of existing single-unit detached dwellings to commercial uses, creating a unique, unique mixed-use character. And it serves as the transition between residential neighborhoods and higher intensity commercial uses. So staff had recommended denial and just said the plan does not support introducing non-residential uses along this portion of Bonnie Oaks Drive and concerns about introducing commercial mid-block. The applicant had not proposed any conditions. And there was an opposition present. This case was deferred. And Planning Commission determined that with conditions, that this is, the rezoning would be appropriate. And I'm going to go to the next slide, which is just zooming in on those conditions, which is maintaining, maintaining a residential character, limiting it to kind of that office professional mix and, and addressing monument signs. And really, this is intending to incorporate a use in a, in an area where it's kind of in transition, but then acknowledging the single-family homes around it. So the, the conditions are intending to help address some of the impacts of introducing a neighborhood zone in this area.
Thank you for going over that. Councilman Harvey.
Uh, I think it's from earlier.
Okay. I see no other lights. Any other questions about this example? Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Karen, for going over that. I think that's a good example of how you can make something work in a community. So item G.
Okay, this one, the next case, this is a lifting condition, so not a rezoning. This property is zoned with one condition. It's on the eastern side of the city, near the Summit Ballfields. It's about one block south of Atheson, just to help to orient. The request is to lift a condition from a 2022 rezoning and the proposed use is single-unit residential. This is actually part of a larger development that extends to the west. The property was annexed in 2011, was rezoned to R3 with conditions in 2022. One of those conditions was no residential development within the first 150 feet from the parcel line abutting Patton Town Road. So the proposed use was apartment, where it was apartments, but setting it back from Patton Town Road to help with compatibility of this kind of rural suburban transitioning area. So the applicant noted that they want to lift conditions to construct a 55-unit, single-family residential development. The site was originally rezoned to develop multifamily residential. But since the project is now proposed to be single-unit residential, the 150-foot setback is no longer needed or desired. So staff is recommending approval. It is in line with the plan, but recommends limiting a condition to single-unit detached residential to ensure compatibility. So there was opposition present. There was one gentleman that was concerned about the location of sewer access to the property, how sewer was actually run to the site, traffic, and then generally just had a lot of thoughts about city services in this area. So Planning Commission found that the request is compatible with the plan and surrounding area and recommends approving lifting that condition, but adding the new condition, which is single-unit detached residential only to help support the plan recommendation.
This is in District 6. I have no questions about this one. Does anyone have any questions about? I see no lights on. Okay, thank you. Item H.
The next case is for a property on Broad Street. This is the southern end of Broad Street. The institutional to the right is China New York Christian. The request is to rezone from CMU1 Transitional Mixed Use Commercial Zone to a CR Regional Commercial Zone for a drive-through coffee shop. The site was rezoned to UGC as part of the South Broad zoning study and then equivalency map to CMU1. And that CMU zone is, accommodates a traditional urban mixed-use development. The CR Regional Commercial Zone is intended to accommodate a more auto-oriented commercial activity. And that drive-through is found and allowed use in the regional commercial zone, but not the CMU1, hence the need for rezoning. So staff just had concerns about the more suburban in nature zone, but also traffic safety concerns with the proposed drive-through and queuing. So staff had recommended denial. There was opposition present at Planning Commission. A lot of discussion about the traffic in, in that situ, in that area, particularly with the school. Planning Commission recommends approval with adding a condition to no vehicular access to charge or drive. That would be between the, the drive-through coffee shop and the school. They would have to access off of South Broad, which seemed to address some of those concerns about traffic and queuing.
Councilwoman Dotley, did you get all the information you needed for this one? Any questions?
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. We did meet with the St. Elmo Neighborhood Association yesterday to get some feedback from, and it were those same concerns. I believe China New York Christian School expressed their concerns about the traffic backing up onto Charger Drive. And I did discuss that with the developer. And of course, they, they closed that off, so that concern is taken care of. Traffic on South Broad is heavy. I mean, regardless of was there or was not. But overall, I've received, most people in for, you know, is for this project. So I plan to move forward with it unless I hear a little bit more from constituents. But I think the, the condition is good. But if it's anything else, I just have to bring it next week. But I just wanted to get that, get this one on the record.
And if anyone contacts us, we'll have them contact you also.
Okay, that works. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I see no other lights, and I believe that is our last zoning matter. I think you had one other matter regarding zoning map.
This is a zoning map correction. And this is for certain properties in Black Creek. And I should have, should have probably done an overall map of the zoning in Black Creek. There's a variety of zones in the area. This, we had some properties that were zoned to RTZ, which was the residential townhouse zero lot line zone, which allowed townhomes, but also is used for smaller lots for single-family homes. It was equivalency zone to TRN3 Traditional Neighborhood Residential Zone with a condition of only single unit or townhouse with a maximum density. And I'm going to skip quarter slide and then come back. When we talk about equivalency zone, we have a whole table of if you were a current zone, here's your equivalent zone. And these were kind of the rules for how we created that new zoning map. And this is just a snapshot of RTZ. So RTZ, depending on whether you were in the urban overlay, outside, whether you had conditions, what those conditions were, there were really three routes an RTZ zoned property could go. In this case, it was outside the urban overlay with no conditions relating to use. So staff had equivalent, recommended equivalency zone TRN3. The applicant has, had platted the property and been moving forward with the RTZ zone. The TRN3 zone has a different setback and is not a setback in line with what they're proposing. So let's take a look at that. So the former RTZ zone required a 25-foot minimum front yard setback, which is a little bit more of a kind of a suburban feeling setback. The new TRN3 zone has a build-to zone, which is bringing, because it's a little bit more of an urban, supporting more urban walkabilities, pushing that front setback up. This is not in line with the proposal they'd been working from, the RTZ zone and the plating. So in this case, the map correction would be to the RN13 Residential Neighborhood Zone with a condition of a maximum density of eight dwelling units an acre. So what we were really looking at is RTZ really had three options. In this case, the way they were having, already platted, that TRN3 zone was not working. So the equivalent zone was the RN13 with a condition with maximum density of eight dwelling units an acre.
Councilman Harvey.
Not a question about this, but I'd like a presentation in a minute on another zoning case.
Oh, did I leave one out?
That's okay.
All right, sorry about that. You did say you wanted both of your.
That's okay.
I apologize. Okay. Any questions? Councilman Henderson, you have a question about this one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Karen, I just, I want to make sure that, I guess, that we all understand the District 1 has a 7,500 square foot overlay. This is in that overlay, I believe. But in this situation, this is a plan developed. This is in that overlay, I believe, but in this situation, this is a planned development that is, I would consider completely isolated and away from everything in that 7,500 square foot overlay. So I don't, I don't see this as being any kind of precedence for the rest of District 1 in this overlay. Do you? I mean, I don't want somebody in planning to say, well, we've got it up there on the mountain and it should apply down here.
I would agree with that. The RTZ is adjacent to property zone commercials, so trying to accommodate that Black Creek kind of form that they have. And so when it was rezoned to RTZ, and I apologize, I don't have the date on that, when that was rezoned to RTZ, that started to separate it from what is now the 7.5. That's correct.
Thank you.
So this, their, the equivalency zone is in, was intended to allow them to continue the pattern that had been set by council through that rezoning at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I see no, oh, Councilwoman Hill, Chairwoman Hill.
Thank you. Karen, I want to make sure that I fully understand this. So in doing this, this is a correction specifically to the equivalency mapping for these properties.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
And it was our intention to still, you know, try to accommodate. We have found that larger projects seem to, you know, they've already been moving along and platted and have kind of a master plan. This is just, I think, an example of that.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. I'm good.
I'm seeing no other lights for this matter. Karen, I do want to go back to item D. If you would, review that, please.
Just making sure that this is the case 112?
Yes, 112.
This is on Joiner Road, 1721, 23, 25, and 35 Joiner Road. So this is, Gun Barrel is running north-south to the west side of the site plan, and this is just to help orient it south of the Coles Target Whole Foods development on Gun Barrel. So this bumps up to that parking lot. The development form in the area is kind of a mix of that regional mall, commercial, large paid parking lots, transitioning to residential east of Joiner Road. So the applicant request is to rezone from CNT RN16 to RN3 Residential Neighborhood Zone with conditions for multi-unit residential development. The applicant had proposed a series of conditions. Staff is, the staff report kind of speaks in detail about why some of these are not recommended for moving forward, particularly in speaking with our enforcement partners. But, so staff did not recommend moving forward the landscaping conditions, and it kind of goes into some detail for that. So the RN3 zone is intended to accommodate mixed residential, a little bit higher density residential development, but also could include townhomes or single family. In this case, it's intended to be multi-unit residential. Just to give you an idea of the site plan, Joiner Road is running to the south here, so the commercial complex and parking lot would be to the right of the site plan. Just, staff recommended, staff recommended approval with conditions. Request is compatible with plan and adjacent land uses. There was no opposition present at Planning Commission, and this comes with a Planning Commission recommendation to approve with a condition for proposed roadway improvements to Joiner Road adjacent to the development to include widening of the pavement to 26 feet minimum, dedication of a 30-foot, a 50-foot area to the City of Chattanooga's right-of-way, and expansion of the existing turnaround. And that is really to address, Joiner Road again is running to the south, is really trying to address that, is that becoming an access point to this development.
Councilman Harvey?
Thank you. Could you tell me a little bit more about the landscaping proposal that was denied?
Yes, and so it, so applicants can recommend or volunteer to add conditions on. A lot of times, they've been worked out with the neighborhood, or they've just identified that might help it become more compatible. So that, the applicant had proposed landscaping along Joiner, and so, and I'm just going to read here. Staff did not recommend the applicant's proposed land case conditions because the landscape ordinance requires large trees, there are overhead utilities, and so the requirement would have to be smaller trees on center. So the proposed condition is acting to lessen the requirement, and trees would be required regardless of the condition. There's another condition, which is the proposed 10-foot landscape buffer. Staff noted that these trees are not required by the landscape ordinance, this property is surrounded by commercial uses and paid parking lot. These evergreen trees were more likely proposed to limit the subject property from views of the budding property, which is that big parking lot. So screening the parking and drive areas from the neighboring townhomes would be more beneficial to the community. So it's basically just looking at what is allowed by code and what makes more sense. And a lot of that is having code, just reinforcing the code recommendation.
So they still will have the trees, or?
They will.
But not as big?
So staff's recommendation is to approve with no landscape conditions. So it's not, LDO is not locked into the condition with no condition to vary it. And so rather work through the LDO process for the landscaping ordinance. The applicant can always add whatever buffering and conditions they want if they would like. But it's basically saying, with the site, we have landscaping conditions that will be enforced and a process to enforce this with LDO instead of having this as a condition.
Okay, very good. I had a neighborhood meeting with this, this area, and that there was no opposition present. There were some neighbors there. Their main concern was Joiner Road, and at the time, the paving list had just come out, and so I announced to them that North Joiner was getting a nice paving, and so they were very excited about that. So, yeah, I don't see any issues. Again, the neighbors were in support, especially with Joiner Road. So thank you to the mayor and his staff for, for getting that done for us. They're excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other lights. Any other questions about any of these matters that are coming up next week? As a reminder, the Planning Commission will be meeting this coming Monday at 1:00. So if you have any future projects or applications that are out that you want to come listen to, it's a good, good time to hear from the applicants, especially if you have anything that you might have some opposition on. With that, Madam Chairwoman, 5:00? Okay. We will recess until 5:00, and as a reminder, it sounds like we have an attorney, oh, my, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Elliott.
Really quickly, put a point of privilege of your mind. I know we have some people that may be leaving. We have some folks here who are here in support of our tax-freez resolution. If you are those, could you stand up for a second for support of tax-freez resolution? Many of whom are from Glenwood Community Center, District 9, and the rest of the city. I want to thank y'all for coming and showing support. I know some may be leaving, but I just want to thank y'all in advance for your support, and hopefully we can make this happen in a few minutes. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. We will recess until 5:00, and we have a attorney-client meeting. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read item eight A? A, alternate version.
Yes. An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right of way in the 200 block of Tremont Street as detailed on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you, client, counsel. This is the alternate version. Can I get a motion?
No motion.
Motion to approve? I have a motion by anyone to approve it.
Both to approve.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. We have a motion to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, please.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right of way in the unit block of Chamberlain Street as shown on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to resolutions. Item A, please.
A resolution authorizing the Department of Finance to utilize the new senior tax freeze amounts set forth in Tennessee Code annotated section 675-706-F3A3, with an income limit of $60,000 on all applications for the senior tax freeze program established at City Code Section 2, 111, in the form attached here too as Exhibit 1.
Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Councilman Elliott?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to present this amendment to the floor. Move to amend this resolution to open the reopen applications from the time that this resolution is passed until September 12th.
Phil, do you have that?
Yes.
Read it back to us.
There'd be at least a motion to amend to approve applications to be accepted until September the 12th of 2025.
Okay.
And that will apply for the 2025 tax year.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to amend with a proper second. If you've got any questions or comments, go ahead and hit your like. Councilman Elliott, do you want to add anything?
Yes, if you don't mind. The goal of this amendment is to, with the hopes that we pass this resolution to increase the senior tax freeze income limit from 49,000 to 60, the goal of this amendment is to hopefully allow folks who are not already in the program or who previously did not qualify for the program to apply and be accepted into the program and avoiding any potential rate hikes that may come from any potential budget amendments. There has been some concern that we may not be able to do this legally, but I want to have this conversation now on the dais amongst our colleagues. Phil, I know you have an opinion on this. Weston and Roberta from our finance offices also have opinions, and I would like to make sure that we can have this conversation on the dais to see which way is best to, how to move forward and see if this is something that we could accomplish for our seniors legally.
And at least on our end of it, we have reviewed today the requirements under the state law Board of Equalization Regulations, which are found at section 609.09 regarding application process and deadlines. And those things were adopted back in 2007 originally here, but at least through March the 23rd of 2025, it says the taxpayer must apply within 35 days from the date taxes in the jurisdiction of the collecting official become delinquent for the tax year for which the freeze is sought to establish an initial base tax. That tax date, at least according to the Comptroller's Office, they've been telling us at least today, would be on about April the 5th of 2025 for the tax year, 2024 taxes. 2025 taxes, I think you're golden on at this point in time to go for the future here, but for the taxes for 2024, that that date has passed. And we contacted the Comptroller's Office today, and they were they were saying that 2024 taxes deadline has passed, but 2025 is okay.
That's not tax bill. I'm good. I would like to hear if the finance office, if you find, Madam Chair, if they have anything else to add.
Sure. Good afternoon. So, as Phil said, the 2024 tax year application process has been closed. It closed April 4th or 5th of 2025. In order for a taxpayer not to feel the proposed or impending rate hike, they would have had to have applied and been approved for the 2024 year. So as Phil said, if they apply now, they will be approved in 2025, so going forward, they will not feel any tax hike. But they would feel discouraged when, because we, the state does not allow us to open up the 24 tax year to have people apply, which is when they would have had to apply, if that makes sense.
So are we, if I may, are we talking about the the assessed value of the property is locked in? And so when you apply for 2025, it's your new appraisal?
The tax bill is frozen, so not not the rate or the value, just the tax bill. The amount you pay is frozen, so it would have been frozen in 2024 if you had applied. So when it goes up in 25, you would not feel it. But if you apply for 25 now, it will be frozen at the bill that goes out in October. So then you, moving forward, if it goes up again and you continue to apply, you will not feel it.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Counselwoman Dotley?
Okay, I think Weston answered my question in that, trying to figure out the actual timeframe, because the, so if they apply, so whatever the tax bill, tax bill goes out in October, whatever that is, that goes out October 1, it is what it is. That's that bill. However, when they apply by April of what, 2026, that'll be for next time?
Correct.
For next time. Okay, for the, for tax bill, October 2026.
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay, that makes sense. So in essence, so Phil or Weston, so with the amendment that Councilman Elliott just put on the floor, with the September 12th date, it will only be relevant to, would it, would it matter then to open up the applications again in that case?
I don't believe it allows you to reopen them up on that.
Yeah, I think I think they're already open till that April 4th or 5th date, for 2025, and Roberta can correct me if I'm wrong, but. I think the intent was to try to open for 2024 to freeze it, but I don't believe the state allows us to do that.
Okay, so the state won't allow allow us to kind of retrodate or go back.
Correct.
So whatever comes in October is that, and then whatever come, and then they could apply, and then October 2026 will be the, they can have it froze for that tax period. Okay, and so I guess now my, I guess the question about the date, because it's September 12th. So would it, would reopening at this point make make an impact? And I see Ms. Roberta back there.
Uh, no, so if we, if we were allowed to go back, then the 12th would work, but I think, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 20, we have 35 days past the delinquency date, which is March 1st. It puts us in that April 4th, 5th timeframe of 2026 to apply, so from now until April 4th, let's say, 2026, you can apply and have your tax bill frozen.
For the next year.
Correct.
Okay.
For next year. So, but to go back and freeze last year's bill so that you would not feel any impact this year to a taxpayer, the state will not allow us to go back and do that, which was, the intent, I think, behind the amendment was to try to do that, but we've talked to the comptroller this afternoon, and he got some more clarity, and we're not allowed to go back and reopen the 2024 period.
Okay, that works. Thank you, Weston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You, you definitely need your resolution bumping the number up to $60,000 though.
Correct.
Councilman Henderson?
So, Councilman Elliott, I'm, and I'm gathering from that, really the amendment is muted.
Correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Councilman Elliott?
Um, colleagues, I appreciate you guys even allowing me to entertain this amendment. Residents, I apologize, and I hate that I could not get this sooner to protect you all from upcoming potential changes. But I still, given that this body votes to increase the income limits, it is still a win that we are now going to allow more folks in our community to take advantage of this, who's been xed out. I don't think 60,000 is enough, and I wish I can do more. The fight does not end here. It can, I will look to continue to go to the state to try to increase it, but I apologize that I could not get these applications open before any potential changes take place with a hike. But with that, Madam Chair, I would like to pull my amendment
Withdraw that.
from this bill and go back to the main resolution.
Okay. Yes, please.
You would not have been able to do a whole lot this year, I'm afraid, though, because you weren't in office until after that April the 4th date on there. So that was one of those issues, so.
You did the best you could.
You did the best you could.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, counsel, so we have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item B, Madam Clerk?
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Terry Knowles as fire chief.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor to move confirmation of Terry Knowles as fire chief.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. If you have any questions or comments, please hit your like. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, we have two extensions, Madam Clerk. That gives us seven yeses.
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two. Congratulations, Chief. Would you like to say anything? That's the kind of thing they do once you're a chief. You got to talk on the mic all the time.
And we count the number of "us" in your speech.
Thank you again. I want to first off thank Mayor Kelly for this incredible opportunity, not only to serve, continue to serve my community in this different capacity, but also to serve the men and women of this outstanding department. That's what this position is all about, is service to the men and women that do the job every day. And it is truly humbling to get this position. It has been a dream of mine and a goal, and thank you for helping me achieve that. And thank you to all my friends and brothers and sisters. Thank you for helping me achieve that also. Thanks, thank you for all, to all the council for the meetings that we've had and your support. And I know, Ms. Noel, we haven't had a chance to to meet yet, but you came up to me and let me know that, no matter what, you supported me and you, and every one of you have made sure to let me know that you supported the men and women of this department, and that's what it's about. It's to support them. So I look forward. So I look forward to the direction of this department and where we're going to be going and look forward to working with all of you all throughout the next years. Thank you so much.
Item C, please.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Al Manuel Douglas to the Chattanooga Downtown Redevelopment Corporation Board for a term beginning on August 6, 2025 and ending on August 5, 2028.
Motion approved.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is Al, Al Manuel Douglas, is he here today? Well, we thank you very much for your service. Madam Clerk, let's take these next three items, D, E, and F, together as a package, please.
Item D, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for PIN number 129839.00 US 41 from Wauhatchie Pike Browns Ferry Road to near SR 17 in Chattanooga Route SR 2. Item E, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for PIN number 125387.00 at LMS 4.6 and 5.1 in Chattanooga Rockfall Mitigation Route SR 2. Item F, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for PIN number 125259.00 at LM 3.8 Rockfall Mitigation Route SR 148.
Councilman Henderson?
Move approval.
Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. If you have any questions or comments, please hit your light. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Items G and H, please, as a package, Madam Clerk.
Item G, a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to erect community's secondary street name signs on Central Avenue from East 38th Street to Workman Road designating such portions as Milton L. Jackson Senior Avenue. Item H, a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to erect a memoranda's secondary street name signs on West 45th Street from Central Avenue to Oakland Avenue designating it as Florence High Avenue.
Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilwoman Dotley, did I miss a comment from you? I apologize.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I didn't want to make a comment about these two resolutions, about Mr. Milton Jackson Senior, as well as Ms. Florence High Avenue. And also about a month or two ago, we passed a resolution for Ms. Irma's Choice. All of those are South Chattanooga Alton Park natives. They've had a great impact on our community. And so as the community continues to grow and evolve, we want to make sure we have that legacy there in the community. So we're planning a, well, they are planning a big celebration. And we will do a, and I'll make the council aware if you would like to come, but planning a big celebration in South Chattanooga that will unveil all three signs at the same time, have a big community celebration around it. But I did want to note, Mr. Milton L. Jackson actually worked hard with the EPA and Environmental Justice. Florence High worked with the youth, and Ms. Irma Choice really was like a neighborhood mother. And so although they're all passed, they passed on, it's good to secure their legacy in the South Chattanooga community with new people coming in. So just wanted to note that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel, so much.
Item I, please.
A resolution authorizing four-year on-call blanket contracts for planned production services. Contract number W24026 with the following firms. One, Energia. Two, C2RL Engineering. Three, Consort Engineers LLC. Four, Gresham Smith. Five, HDR Inc. Six, Jacobs Solutions. Seven, Kimley Horn and Associates Inc. Eight, LJ A Engineering Inc. Nine, Stantec Inc. Ten, Symbion Science Engineering and Construction Inc. Eleven, Arduro. Twelve, Barge Design Solutions Inc. Thirteen, Black &amp; Vich Corporation. Fourteen, CDM Smith Inc. Fifteen, Clean Methane Systems. Sixteen, Core Engineering LLC. Seventeen, CTI and Associates Inc. Eighteen, GeoSynTech Consultants Inc. Nineteen, Lamar Dunn and Associates. Twenty, Orchard, Hiltz and McLennan Inc. Twenty-one, Romo, Klapper and Call LLP. And twenty-two, TWM Inc. For professional services estimated at $1 million annually for all 22 professional firms for use by the wastewater department.
Thank you, counsel. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to purchases.
Good evening, counsel. We have five purchasers recommended for approval this evening. The first is from Finance, the purchasing department. This is a year three renewal for janitorial cleaning supplies. American Paper and Twine has requested an 8.8% price increase due to the cost of materials. The new estimated annual spend will be $170,000. Purchasing approves this increase. The next one is from Human Resources. Approval is requested for a name change from Epiphany RX to Navitas Health Solutions for the pharmacy benefit services agreement PA 100170. The next one is Public Works Fleet Management Division. This is a year two renewal for Harley-Davidson Police Improved Cycle Service and Repairs. White Lightning Harley-Davidson has requested a 3% increase due to the cost of labor. The estimated annual spend will be $61,000. Public Works approves that increase. The next one is Public Works Fleet Management. This is a two-month extension to the Enterprise Rent a Rent a Car Agreement. That coincides with the State of Tennessee contract negotiations are still underway. There's no additional funds to be added. And the last one is Public Works. This is a one-time purchase of playground equipment for the James A. Henry Campus Hub in the amount of $234,537.59, and that purchase would be utilizing the Omni partners contract.
Right. Move to approve. Councilman Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question on the name change. What exactly is the 1.4 million going towards to change the name?
That's just the amount on the agreement. We're only changing the name, not the amount.
Okay. What what is the cost associated with?
The pharmacy benefit manager? Is there anyone from HR?
I guess my main question is, we're not paying 1.4 million dollars to change the name?
No, no, that's not the situation. The contract is for that. Epiphany, Navitas, they were, Epiphany was the DBA for Navitas. And we got notification this past month that they had dropped the Epiphany part. So now it's Navitas only, and we're having to, having to change that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. If you have any additional questions or comments, hit your light. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
You have two sole source purchases to report. The first is RPA. Chattanooga Metropolitan Planning Organization staff would have access to a three-year online training program from the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations research for a cost of $30,590. That program would provide full access to all MPO-related course materials and a dedicated portal. And also from wastewater to purchase heart cell fan parts for a total of $20,293 using Rogers and Morgan as the sole authorized distributor for heart cell repair parts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Councilman Henderson?
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to announce an ad hoc committee meeting to to discuss the alternate version of the budget on August the 12th at 1:30 in the conference room. Any and all council members are invited to attend. In to accommodate the work that this ad hoc committee is doing, Madam Chair, I would like to request that we move the public hearing back to August the 26th to be able to give us time to notice this alternate version.
Question that comes with that, I think we're going to need to hear from our budget chairwoman and possibly our chief financial officer. We need to have the hearing, and the goal would be to have the hearing and have a week before we have a vote, but we need to have a vote in time to get tax bills out, right?
So we we have in the past had a public hearing on the same day as the first vote. And according to the city attorney, we only have to have a public hearing by the second vote. So we're actually, I guess, still a week ahead. We have accommodated public hearings on the same day as the first vote before. And and I'm just requesting in order, in order for us to be able to do the work and accommodate the 10 days that that we move the public hearing to August the 26th.
Okay, in the anticipation that there would be another version that would come out of that?
Well, just the version, I mean, the line item version that would come out of that so that it can be discussed in the public hearing.
Madam Budget Chair?
Yeah, so I believe we did discuss this earlier in regards to the timeline, because we are on a time crunch in order to get the amendment done. We will not have counsel on September the 2nd. Is that correct? No counsel? So that is, because we are not having a council, a council meeting, we need, we do need to go ahead and have that public hearing. What is scheduled currently for August the 19th?
That's what it's scheduled for.
For currently, okay.
Like I said, we can, we can schedule it on the 26th.
So disrupting the timeframe. And have we already, have we already, we haven't noticed, have we noticed that meeting yet, Phil? For the?
You haven't noticed it yet, so it would not be any additional expense, but they can notice it.
That should, that should work. So public hearing on the 26th along with first read? That's, that is pushing it, but it's, this is doable, and I don't, we can accommodate that. So August 26th, public hearing, and the only issue I have with it is if during the public hearing, if constituents come and they have concerns or something that we hear that we may need to address or adjust within that budget, it doesn't give us the time to do that between the first part of the session and then coming back in the second part. Do you get what I'm saying? So if somebody comes and has a recommendation that we are all like, oh, whatever, you know, that's something we want to add or something we want to take out or whatever the case is, that doesn't give the public enough time to, it doesn't give us enough time to kind of mold that over and calculate, you know, put that information in. So that would be my only, you know, my biggest hesitation, because we want to give time for the public to do the public hearing and not feel like we are taking, you know, it's public hearing just because we got to have it, but we are actually listening and hearing what they're saying and making sure that if there's any adjustments we need to make, we have time to make those adjustments. So that I don't want to negate that from public hearing. So that is my, that is my concern about if we decide to move that.
Councilman Henderson, would it be possible for you to host the ad hoc meeting sometime this week?
No, you have to have a week of notice.
A week of, seven days of notice for the ad hoc.
10 days for the public hearing. The only other, I guess, alternative method is making an amendment from the floor as opposed to putting alternate version on the agenda. I just felt like an alternate version on the agenda would be a more transparent way to do this so that the public would be aware of the alternate version. They could speak for or against that as well.
Okay, and it only gives, so even if, let's say we decided on the alternate version, it doesn't give, I don't think it gives the council enough time to contemplate, contemplate public, public input, and we don't want to, and I don't want to mess, I don't want to mess with that.
So let me, let me ask one more question then. And I don't remember, Chief, what the, since you're at the podium, what the drop dead date of when we have to have this budget approved by? I think it was the 16th, correct?
So the reason for trying to have second and final read on the 9th was to provide ample time for Finance to do what it needs to do in terms of submitting everything finalized to the comptroller up at the state and to create print and mail the tax bills. So that's why we targeted the the 9th. And at the time, we, we had in mind, you know, there could be a potential slip. But but my concern at this juncture would be that if we, if we move the public hearing now to the budget chairwoman's point, and there's a conversation that happens, well, we're going to slip too much and we're going to run out of time. And so it does give me a little bit of additional heartburn on top of the heartburn.
Well, I guess my, my question is, like, what is the drop dead date that we have to have second reading on? I mean, if, my question again, I'm going to ask, if we got second reading on the 16th, does that give you enough time for Finance to do what they need to do and get the, everything to?
I believe that they would be able to do it, sir. I think that it does create a crunch for them, and it changes the way that their working days will look for those final two weeks of the month of September. But it is possible.
Madam Chair, I guess the other, another option could be that that we have a council meeting on that second.
That's what I was thinking, is that we have council on the second, and we do.
I think most people are back at work on the second anyway.
The first reading on the second and the second reading on the 9th.
Just by a show of hands, how many council members were, because we got previous notice that we were not having a meeting, so plans were made. By a show of hands, can I see how many council members would be available for that September 2nd meeting? One, two, three, four? So we don't know for you. It could be that day. We don't know. One, can I say that again? One, two, three, four, five? I mean, it's a quorum maybe, if council, we don't know, because baby do September the 4th. So, because I wasn't, I hadn't planned on being here for that day, simply because we had been giving previous notice that we were not having council meeting. So let me.
The alternative would be we meet another day of the week.
Yeah, so let's, thank you, Councilman Henderson, you have just thrown a monkey in his rent.
Just doing my job here.
Oil, oil machine we had going here. So let's do, let's do this. We can do, I tell you what, we can do. We can have that public hearing on the, is that, well, you got a notice 19th. We can go ahead and have it on the 26th, but, you know, I don't want to push it out to a place where it puts all, all of, all of us in a bind. But just so you know, if we are in a bind, please direct everyone to Councilman Henderson. So we can move that to August 2, so we can move it to August 26th and Kevin and, that way we can still, because that'll still keep us on track for September the 9th, correct? Okay, and I don't want to put the council on the burden for September the 2nd to maybe have a quorum. I don't want to put you in that, you and Madam, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair in that position either. So we can move that to August the 26th for a public hearing, since it hasn't been noticed yet. And then public hearing and first reading the same date. And then we could move with second reading on September the, the, what is it, September 9th? Okay, that works.
Madam Budget Chair, if I may, I would like to ask that we hold the date for the administration's proposal and to have our public hearing as scheduled on the 19th.
So two public hearings?
That's correct. And I would also just like to point out that we have been at this for weeks and weeks, and there has been plenty of time to put together a committee to go line by line. And there's no reason to jeopardize the entire process here at the end.
That is true. Plus, either way, first vote is first vote, doesn't matter. When in the spirit of diplomacy.
I mean.
That's fine.
I don't have any objection to that.
Right, so hold the, the budget one, public hearing.
The administration's proposal on the 19th.
Okay, and then we'll have a city, well, Councilman Henderson's proposal on the 26th. Right, everybody good? Okay, and we still not here on the 2nd, which is what I need to confirm for sure. Okay, all right, so sounds good, sounds good. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, there it is. Thank you so much.
Yep, you got all that, Nicole? Okay.
Yes.
She's got it.
Right, yes.
Nicole knows better than all the rest of it. All right. All right, Councilman Davis? Any, any, no report, okay. Councilman Harvey?
No report.
Councilman Clark?
No report.
Councilman Elliott?
No committee report, uh, Madam Chair, but we'd like to announce that District 9 is having a town hall, uh, August 18th at 6 o'clock at Redemption to the Nations Church on Bailey Avenue. So, uh, all of District 9, please come. This will be an opportunity to talk about some of the things we were able to accomplish in this first part of the budget for our district. We'll be talking about some of the projects we have upcoming across our neighborhoods and also to hear the proposal from the mayor's office about their, uh, budget proposals and then have a very honest conversation as a community as, uh, some of the best ways of moving forward as far as this amendment. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dotley?
Yeah, so we just did my budget, uh, of the 19th, public administration, public hearing, August the, oh, we didn't have our fourth and final budget station today, uh, and then public hearing is August the 19th.
19th for administration, August 26th is, uh, Councilman Henderson and, uh, council's, uh, presentation, uh, public hearing. Uh, also, first vote for, uh, those will be August the 26th and then second vote September the 9th with the understanding that we need to have all of this really done by, uh, September, that we go September 9th, so administration has adequate time to get tax bills ready and do all the things they need to do. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Burr?
We had a planning and zoning committee meeting today. Uh, had seven presentations from Karen Rennick, thank you, Karen, if you're still here. Um, as a reminder, the planning commission meeting will meet, the planning commission will meet, uh, next Monday, August 11th at 1 o'clock if anybody's interested.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Noel?
No report, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. We have now, Mr. Attorney, you don't have anything to do?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, we've now reached the point in our meeting where we are happy to recognize persons who are here and wish to address the council. If you are here for that, please go ahead and line up behind the podium, um, and listen while our attorney reads the rules.
So at the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone up front provided for that purpose, can't have more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi judicial authority and not under, uh, things that are under the authority of, uh, other governmental bodies or agencies. Uh, do not engage in any vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting which is prohibited by Tennessee law, and someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with a meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, sir.
How's it going? Andrew Jones, today with, uh, so I watched the, got a lot to say, but the biggest thing that I find very frustrating as a person who believes in any political figure should have a backbone in philosophy and the, the challenge, as you have here in this Venn diagram, feels like there's zero philosophy when it comes to, I want reliable services, I want community improvement, I want taxes to stay the same. Right in the middle does not exist. I mean, you're the government, you're supposed to be transparent, the process, the process, I showed up late, but I was listening on YouTube and thank you for playing it live. Um, but the process of transparency is vital for our constitution, our city, our, all of it. If we want the American spirit to survive and we want people to do better than they are currently doing for their children, I don't, this isn't a Republican, this isn't a Democrat thing, people are sick and tired of it. But the fact that you have does not exist, maybe does not exist this year, maybe doesn't exist next year, but how in the heck is there not a conversation of, hey, inflation has grown 22% since 2021, and in the 635-page budget, it says 2020, and I think that's on page five or six or something? So if you're, if you're not going to get all of your data correct and you're not going to sort, cite it like you would for a freshman in college, um, the RPA Plan Hamilton website, which I've spoken a lot with the commission about this, there was a whole bunch of plans but zero studies on the plans and studies page, transparency, the transparency of an interview, nothing against you, sir, who was here today and Mayor Kelly elected to do the job, but transparency, it doesn't matter what we are talking about, it doesn't matter what your motivations are, you are in charge of a lot of people, and you should focus more on the people in the bigger picture rather than a problem that's too hard, therefore you put, does not exist. That's all I got. Thank you.
Scott Burkhild, 2290 Ogletree Avenue. Uh, I own a home and a business in District 4. I'm here to request, uh, that my representative as well as the rest of council oppose the administration's proposed massive tax hike. My home was devastated by the 2020 tornado and I had to pay rent and taxes, uh, for my home while I was out of it for years, and insurance did not cover all the costs to rebuild. In that same last five years, um, health insurance that I pay for my small business with three employees, uh, for their family premiums, which I pay, is more than doubled. Uh, my homeowner's insurance, for the benefit of having a claim, uh, covered at least in part, uh, more than quintupled, as well as the increase in groceries, gas, and of course, everything else. Um, then because my home was dilapidated in 2021, the assessment wasn't a significant increase, so now with the 2025 assessment, uh, my tax burden has grown exponentially. A staffer last month described the increase in property values in, in this area as quote-unquote "wealth" and said, quote, "They've got that equity that they've created," end quote. And my question is, where? Where is that equity? Where's that cash? If you go to sell your home, and the reason that most people are not selling their homes is because they cannot sell and then go into a comparable home because everything else has increased in price with inflation. Are you going to take out a home equity line of credit at 6% interest to pay the taxes? Are you going to take out a HELOC to pay the massive increase in health insurance costs for your small business or the quintupling of your homeowner's insurance? I don't think so. I think the mayor's move to keep pork in the current budget and then frame this issue now as only about being first responders is, is sort of an obvious and cynical political boy that should not be, uh, tolerated. It's plunder essentially to take, uh, funds by force of law from one group of people and to spend it on what the government thinks is important rather than have the person in the family who earned those hard-earned dollars determine where those dollars should go. I think that the county, uh, saw this view, uh, saw this issue with the proper view and kept the certified tax rate with no adjustment. And as far as the additional pork that is in the budget, I think Gail Green's recent op-ed in the Chattanooga, Chattanooga identified a number of, of pork projects that could be eliminated from the budget to achieve a balanced budget and increase paid for our first responders. So in short, the city should eliminate that in the budget, not pile on additional tax burdens on top of the already exponential increase in tax burden that hard-working families have to bear in our city. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack Thompson, I'm the president of the Chattanooga Firefighters Association, Local 820. First, I would like to congratulate Chief Knowles on his appointment and look forward to working with him for years to come. I'm here to ask for your support of mayor's proposed military rate of 1.99. This proposal isn't just about numbers, it's about people. It's about keeping firefighters who protect this city every day on the job and fairly compensated, and it's about preserving the critical services that make our neighborhood strong, like our community centers, and the dedicated staff who serves them. Public safety is not negotiable, but just as important is the ability of our firefighter, um, excuse me, of our fire department to recruit, retain qualified, experienced firefighters. We have already lost too many to better pay in departments. Without action now, safety net, our residents' reliance begins to fray. The 1.99 rate gives Chattanooga the means to fund fair pay for firefighters without cutting essential services or laying off other city workers. It's a smart balance approach that protects the public, supports city employees, and invests in future of our communities. We are not asking for extravagance, we're asking for sustainability, for stability, for the ability to keep showing up when our residents need us most. And for you, support our mayor's proposal, keep Chattanooga safe, keep, keep it strong. Thank you.
Madam Chair, council? My name's Jason Brown, and I'm here on behalf of Service Employees International Union, Local 205 Chattanooga Chapter. It's a lot to say, I know. But I'm here to support the mayor's proposed $1.99 military rate. I think it is the right path forward to improve conditions for city employees, not only those that I represent, but fire and police as well. I also think it's the right path forward to support, uh, the citizens of Chattanooga. I think it's the right balance. Uh, all of us are taxpayers, all of us benefit from these investments. I feel like it's the right thing to do. Uh, a point of clarification, I know on the line item on the budget proposal, it says SEIU, uh, on-call and call-back. I'd like to clarify that that's not just us and the people that I represent, that is fire and police and everybody in the city will benefit from that enhancement. And it's something that hasn't been done in 10 years, and as one of the earlier speakers pointed out, the cost of doing business and the cost of living has increased dramatically. And when you're on call, specifically to this point, when you're on call and you're called back, your entire day and week is consumed by your obligation to the citizens of Chattanooga. And $10 a day, in my opinion, is a very, uh, offensive price to pay for that. So I would ask that you support the mayor's budget at the $1.99 military rate, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Russell. I'm a, I live in Hick, in, uh, District 3. I'm a city employee, proud to be a, a small part of the team of essential workers at the wastewater department. I'm also a member of SEIU, uh, Local 205, and I also want to, uh, support the mayor's budget and thank the mayor and his staff for the thoughtful process and, and including, as Jason said, about long call pay. It's not going to just benefit SEIU members, it will benefit, um, our first responders as well. It's, uh, vitally needed. And I also wanted to, uh, and I try to be as positive as I can, but I vehemently oppose any, uh, cuts that is going to reduce, that's going to, uh, impact, uh, the, a reduction in force. Uh, I think we all have enough brains and, and knowledge up here and expertise to, to find that money, and we need to provide the essential services that our citizens deserve and demand, and I think that we need to figure out how to do that. Um, while I'm up here, I also want to, uh, stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters at the UAW for Volkswagen and, uh, want to, you know, a little history for people that don't know, in April of 2024, they, they held a historic vote where they emphatically voted to have a union, the first, uh, union event of foreign car manufacturer in the South. Um, despite, you know, going on a year and a half now, they haven't been able to secure a contract yet. And what we're, what I'm, would like to ask that the city council, my, my, uh, city council member of District 3, as well as the rest of the city council, to support those workers in any, any way you can to make sure that Volkswagen will give the, the workers, uh, a better way of life. They're not asking for the moon and stars, you know, they're, if you look down the street, basically in, uh, Spring Hill, Tennessee, that's basically what they're asking for. And I believe that, and I think everyone that I know believes that, you know, what's good for workers in Spring Hill is good for workers in Chattanooga. So I want to thank you for your consideration of the budget. I'd like to thank the mayor and his staff and thank the folks in, uh, finance and, and budget as well. Those got, those folks work harder than you know, uh, sometimes to make it all happen in it. So I appreciate your time and, uh, thank you. Support UAW and support the budget. Thank you.
Hi, Keith Wiles, Vice President, Chattanooga Local 820, Chattanooga Firefighters Association. Uh, the station I serve is in District 6, Brainerd. Um, last week, I want to apologize, I may have come off as a bit abrasive during the , uh, work session, uh, Councilwoman Dotley, when you asked me about volunteers in the county, uh, I, I made a joke, but, uh, in every joke, there's a little bit of truth, right? So the joke was volunteers have difficult times putting out fires, right? Uh, well, the truth to that matter is, is the reason that's the case is that we're paid to be ready. We're paid to be in the fire stations, ready to respond to a fire. Volunteers have it a little harder than, than we do. They have to, they have to get out of bed at their house, drive to the fire station, get the fire truck, get to there. Fire's doubling in size every, every minute, right? So we should be able to put a fire out quicker because we're there and we're ready. In order for us to be there and ready, uh, we need to be paid, right? So, uh, I've heard a lot of talk about inflation, we know it better than anybody else. You, you guys are against a rock and a hard place, we're, we're against the same rock and a hard place. Inflation is hitting us just as hard as it's hitting everybody sitting out here. Uh, went to a recent conference, uh, my son works for Chattanooga Fire Department, and I was able to take him to that conference as well. They were in a separate little meeting room and firefighters just talking about how much they got paid. Uh, my son told him how much they got paid, and he was laughed at. He was literally laughed to his face. Uh, and they said, I, I wouldn't go to work for that amount of money. Um, and that's, that's the, that's the truth of, of departments nationwide, is that, that we are typically among the bottom. And I don't have to, I think everyone here is kind of in support of that. Um, I don't, I don't think I have to convince you of that in any way, shape, or form. But I know where the money come from, comes from matters. As an officer in a labor union, I can't support another employee losing their job so that I make more money. You know, that's, that chokes me up just thinking about it. I don't, I don't support that. Uh, I also know that, that Tennessee is, is, I was teaching a class in California not long ago in Ventura County, California, and I told him, hey, stop moving to Tennessee, please. You know, you, you are driving our, our, our property values to where we can't afford it. Uh, but they're coming here because tax rates are low, and they're benefiting from us. They're benefiting from us having awful service that we give to our constituents. And they're coming here just retiring in a wealth of glory, and it's, it's a little bit of, it's kind of shameful in my opinion, but, um, I think we can do better. I rambled, I'm sorry. I appreciate it though, thank you guys very much.
Well, um, Money Bell here. I got Marie Mont behind me, so I'm a little nervous. This is why they call Money Bell The Boys. I've got a song here I'm gonna do, uh, it's about three minutes long, so I'm gonna get to it. Uh, that's why they call me The Boys. I'm using the voice of Gino Shipley of the City, uh, County Commission. It goes a little something like this. All right, now quiet on the sector, boys. Money Bell's here. Uh, get rid of that, I'm in the background, it's Kain, all righty. We're getting ready to do a new song here, it's a mountain song, uh, it's not that old Dixie song, oh, no, no, it's a new song here, uh, it's old to Tim Keller, uh, the Brent Parrish, a home record, uh, and it goes a little something like this. And it goes a little something like this. She'll be coming around the mountain when she comes. She'll be coming around the mountain when she comes. She'll be coming around the mountain when she comes. She'll be pulling the horse twice when she comes. She'll be walking the horse twice, jumping on the bayway. She'll be pulling the horse twice when she comes. Tim Kelly will sign on the batten' why when she comes. Tim Kelly will sign on the batten' why. He'll be striking over by it. He'll sign on the batten' why when she comes. He'll be pulling by the mountain when she comes. She'll be coming around the mountain when she comes. She'll be pulling around the mountain when she comes. Okay, boys, we gonna do it with something like that. It's gonna be an unknown standard. It's gonna go straight to the top.
Marie Mott, District 6. You know, I'm standing here because we have to confront some very hard truths about our city. We stand at a fundamental choice between who we would deceive in terms of the people and about our city's finances, and those who demand the courage to tell the truth. For eight years of multiple administrations, we've watched our pension obligations explode from 5.8 million to $18 million. As I stated the last time I was here, that's 210% increase. And what has been the council's response? To hide it, to ignore it, to ask the people of Chattanooga to pay more without telling them why. Every month you delay, another half million dollars gets added to our unfunded liability. Every year you refuse to act, the hole gets deeper, six to eight million dollars. While you allow pension costs to spiral out of control, you handed millions of dollars of welfare to the pot paint. While working families face rising costs, you tore down public housing to give prime real estate to wealthy developers. When citizens demanded transparency, you have secret meetings. And my God, today, when a judge ruled against you, you appealed the decision rather than face accountability. Do you know what happened to Detroit when pension obligations consumed their budget? Bankruptcy. Do you know what happened to Stockton, California, when pension obligations went over? Bankruptcy. Central Falls, Rhode Island, bankruptcy. Seven other cities in America, bankruptcy. The Fitch Credit downgrade was your warning shot. The next downgrade moves us toward junk bond status and a death spiral that ends in bankruptcy court. You want to pass the largest tax increase in our city's history without telling the taxpayers why. You want to continue giving corporate handouts while asking working families to pay higher taxes to cover your failures. This is not leadership. This is fiscal malpractice. I'm glad that there will be, I guess, two public meetings. I call upon every citizen who recognizes that our city deserves better to fill that room. Show these officials what they believe is not true, that we're stupid and we don't care. Because our democracy looks like what we demand. And what we do speaks louder than what we promise. I will end by a quote by James Baldwin that says, "I love America more than any country in the world." Exactly for this reason, I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Rankins. I live in District 8. Last time I was here, I neglected to congratulate the new council people that will see it. Also like to congratulate three of the council members who are looking out for the seniors and also looking out for the less of thee. When I watch your education session, I see that it's only two council people that inquire as far as the people that are, are poor or just don't have any money, renters and things like that. And I want to thank you for that. I've talked to a landlord who said that he was hit hard with insurance. So of course, the prices are going to increase for the renters. And also, the prices are gonna increase if this tax increase go up. I'm not saying the police should have a, a pay raise or they should not have a pay raise. I'm just asking, how did we get here? Each year, it seems like it's something. And if you're not looking at your sister cities and learning anything from them, I don't see the county going through this issue. I don't see anyone going through this issue but the city of Chattanooga. We have to do better in order for the people to trust you. And at this moment, I'm not trusting our city council members. They're looking for pork projects, maybe that the federal government have pulled back. And also that, did I mention that we're paying insurance for all the fires that is going on in California? We have to do better.
Hi, my name is Teri Bonfilio. I'm in Marvin's District. I'm here to talk about two topics. One is the senior tax freeze. I was lucky enough to be aware of it a few years ago, so I was able to freeze my taxes from a few years ago. But what about seniors who have never heard of this? So all of a sudden, they find out, ah, there's a freeze, oh, they're gonna freeze it at what, what it was triple what it was three, a few years ago. That doesn't seem fair to me. Tax freeze, freezing it at the same rate that it is today, when, when you guys are doubling our property taxes? So it feels very, it penalizes seniors who are not aware. And I, I hope that you will consider maybe revamping it, like, how about eliminating property taxes for seniors like other states have done? Or at least cutting them in half? It doesn't seem right. Okay, that's my one point. And then I'm concerned about the raise of property taxes and wondering why it's necessary because there's been so much commercial building, it's just exploding. I don't understand who's regulating this and how we're gonna be able to support these, our infrastructure, our sewers, and our electric, and our police, and everything else. It just seems like it's a, it's been going crazy, and nobody's saying no to these developers. But meanwhile, you're collecting a lot of taxes from them. How is it that you, you don't have enough money still with all the building in Chattanooga? It seems, it's, I, I, I think we've got 25,000 new housing units with property taxes being paid on them. What is going on in our city? What are you doing? Pay, charging homeowners of single-family homes and especially seniors, and yet you have all this money coming in from developers, from all over the country, coming here to build houses and high-density housing? I know you're making money on it. Where's that money going? I, I hope that you will look at that.
Hello, my name's Melanie Stover. I live in District 7. I'm retired after working 30 years. I'm, I'm a widow. I'm 70 years old. I live in St. Elmo. I've lived there over 20 years. I've got my tax bill here. It's almost doubled. My, I mean, my appraisal has almost doubled. I was looking at the chart that the mayor's office put up. My city taxes should probably go up somewhere around 400 a year. That's just my city taxes. I also pay county taxes. My question is this. It's my understanding, and I'm, I'm not the smartest on all of this, but it's my understanding the mayor brought a budget before y'all, and that budget had an increase in it, and y'all approved it. I think it was, what, in June? Y'all approved the budget. And he, he ran on the, the topic that he was gonna give the fire and police a increase. So I assume that he had that in that budget. So then, here down the road, he's bringing in a supplemental budget. And he's using, well, we're gonna give the fire and police an increase. I don't understand why that was not part of the original budget. And then the other question I have is this line item of the budget. I assume that y'all did a line item of the budget before you approved it originally. And now, you're gonna do it again, which I commend you for doing that. I commend you for looking at every opportunity where you can cut expenses. Because I believe there's a lot of pork in the mayor's budget already, already. And I heard some even in the supplemental budget. So I didn't qualify for a tax freeze before because I was over the limit. I contacted them. Like I said, I worked 30 years. I'm a widow. I live on a fixed income. So this is a huge burden for me. And I will probably qualify for the tax freeze. But I don't think it's gonna do me much good, even though you did everything you could to try to make it go into effect as soon as possible. My, my request is that you hold off. Do this line by line and hold off on the supplemental budget.
Thank you very much. Councilman Clark?
Uh, Chairwoman, what would be best, that I go after the speakers or?
Are you, do you have something you want to say about the topic?
Yes, about the topics that have come forth to the podium. I want to, while we're on the topic of what you're discussing, I want to say, I am one of those people who have requested that we hold the rate at 2.25. But I also want to let you know that a part of our job here is to be sensitive. I have parents that are elderly that don't fix income, incomes as well, just relatives. I live in these districts. I live with everybody in these rooms. I don't want it, you all to feel as if we're not listening. We're trying to balance and trying to deliver quality service for this government because at the moment, we don't do that, you'll be right back at the podium and say, what was wrong with this? And so we're trying to find the balance of not hurting, but also trying to help. And, you know, we are a city that has not kept up with inflation, I believe. And as, this is a business, it's supply and demand, as people demand more things from us, we have to find, and I believe we do need to cut. I think, I think we should do both. I think we should cut the fat, and I think we should find opportunities. But I just want to say, I know it gets kind of emotional sometimes, and we say things that we often do not mean in the heat of things, and it happens to me all the time. And this is a very sensitive topic for us because we're talking about people's livelihood and their quality of life. So I just ask that you all give us grace as we try to work this out. And we're having those discussions on both sides of the dais. And I don't know if she's in here, but, you know, I had, I had a very spirited debate with Marie Mott, who at sometimes make great points and sometimes can be counterproductive to the conversation, and probably dropped a few F-bombs and things that I'm not as necessarily proud of, but it gets, sometimes we get passionate, and the extra is not called for. So I don't know if she's here, but I definitely wanted to apologize for her. That's typically not my choice of words to use, and I hope she'll accept my apology. But I just ask that you all give us grace. That we do have a heart posture to do the right thing, to make sure you get a quality service government, but not to hurt you and to hinder your quality of life. So just, please call us. I want to hear from you. You can call our clerk's office, blow up our phones, give us your opinions, because we are about to make some tough decisions, and we want to do it with your heart and your wallet in mind. So, but thank you for coming to participate in this dialogue. So I appreciate it.
Can I respond?
Councilman Elliott, it's not really a setup for back and forth.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make that.
If you want to stay after, he might be able to talk after.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna try to stay brief. Y'all all coughing. I'm like, what's going on?
We had a lot of budget sessions in the conference room. We are back to. We didn't need the second to recover. Go ahead, Counsel.
I'm gonna try to be brief when I say this. I'm gonna start this off by saying, I have not made a decision as to where I land on whatever rate. I have to talk to my community first, and that's what I'm gonna be doing on the 18th. But I will say this, and I've been very honest to my district about this, and I will say this as a whole. I've told my community for months that we're gonna have to have this very tough conversation about how do we support fire and police, right? But the reality is, and I've been very honest about this as well, there is gonna have to be some level of increase. That part is unavoidable. How much is the question? How much, how do we accomplish reaching the goals and closing that gap is also a question. I've been intentional by saying that I don't want this all thrown back on taxpayers. My district in particular has seen the highest increase in property assessment values in this city of 63%. I didn't do that. None of the rest of these eight folks on this dais did that. The folks that you elected did that at the county. Your county assessor was responsible for those increases. We also get this comparison quite often to the county, which is not fair. County doesn't pay for fire, to Keith's point. They don't have that responsibility. County has the luxury that they have decided to neglect half of the responsibilities of this county because they don't put any resources in my community. I have roads that dilapidated. I have economic development projects that need help. I have schools, which is one of the things that they do cover, that are raggedy, torn down, and underperforming. So the, I saw the mayor, county mayor made a comment that our tax conversation is draconian. That's nice when you're sitting from a place of privilege when you don't support half of your county. We are gonna have to figure out how to best support our first responders, but also how to best support our community at the same time. Because I do not want my people waking up one day and realizing they can no longer afford to live in the homes that they have lived in for generations. That has been my loud cry since I stepped on this campaign trail over a year ago, and that is still my priority as I go forward. It is not an easy situation. It is, there's gonna have to be some level of compromise on both ends. But I don't think anyone sits on this dais or sits in this community who genuinely does not want what's best for them as individuals or as a community as a whole. But I also don't think we want to wake up and see what a community and a city looks like when we have to start closing fire halls because they're understaffed. When police officers take an hour plus to get the calls, it's already happening in my community. And we have a community that, I'm just staying on that alone, that is trying to tackle crime, and the crime rate is going lower. But when you have cops that wake up and say, I can go to an agency that pays more, why am I here? You don't, I can't blame them, right? When you have a fire department that is bending over backwards to be the very best, some of the best in this state, but they wake up one day and say, I decided to go to another agency because they pay me more, I cannot blame them. We had to have a referendum on the ballot to open up residency requirements because it's too expensive to live in a city that they protect and serve. it's too expensive to live in a city that they protect and serve every single day. That is shameful. And I'm not laying this at anybody's feet. This is no one's responsibility. This is no one's fault, but it's just a harsh reality that we find ourselves in as a community. And I don't think it's us versus them, by no means. This is a decision that we're gonna have to figure out, how to get, a obstacle that we're gonna have to figure out, how do we get over together? And so that's, that's the piece I wanted to share, because I think sometimes folks don't always get to hear exactly where we stand, and as you hear just bits and pieces in these conversations, and like I said, for me and my district, we'll start having a very honest conversation on the 18th, and I hope if you're in District Nine, please show up, because we're, we're gonna peel back the veil. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna get three minutes on the clock for you, just a second. All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Eric Atkins, I'm the co-chair of the unity group at Chattanooga. And looking at the news recently, I was very disturbed. We see that in the state of Texas, they have redrawn the district lines over a five-year period. Usually a redistricting is 10 years. But they have enacted this in five years. They have forced legislators to flee up to the state of Illinois. And right now, we stand on the cusp of a redistricting civil war in this nation. As one state threatens to redraw the lines, that's probably another state to redraw the lines, theoretically. And so the redistricting process is a very serious process. That's why, when we came here a few weeks ago, we said we do stand by the decision of Judge Linder regarding our redistricting process, because it was a flawed process. And it let openness and transparency. And that decision is gonna have repercussions. Because when you don't do the redistricting process right, when you have all sorts of irregularities, when you have all sorts of inaccuracies, ultimately what that leads to is minority vote dilution or disenfranchisement. And we just pray that it don't cause disenfranchisement here, because you have to vet the maps properly. And so we heard a lot about process earlier today, and we can tell you that the redistricting process was flawed. And another process that was flawed was the Harriet Tubman process a few years ago. We had to stand on the steps of City Hall, a few pages away from us, and tell you that the people desire a community benefits agreement. And we had to tell you that we wanted low to moderate income housing. And now we got some paint plant that don't even employ anybody in the neighborhood. While we've given another parcel of land for them to build another paint plant, that's probably not gonna hire anybody in the neighborhood. And it was a flawed process then, and the people did not get a community benefits agreement. And when we embark on this process again, let's hope that they do something that benefits the community. Because God knows, when we don't have our processes right, it's one hell of a sorry thing. Thank you very much.
My name is Sabrina Daniel, 4410 Maryland Drive. I'm a retired teacher on a fixed income. I'm here to talk about the, the situation at hand, which is the budget, how we're gonna fund the things we need, and also how we're gonna take into consideration the needs of our seniors, people paying taxes, how much they're going up. Yes, I'm a professional, but my father was blue collar. He worked for Southern Railway for 46 years. So I am what I am today in large part because of what he did. So I understand about unions, I understand about negotiation. I'm, I'm here to say that I believe, as you are doing, that you need to relook at what is being asked to provide, that you do a line item budget. You look at it. If you don't know what those alphabet soup things mean, then you ask, and you find out where our current money is going. And I think most of us would agree, just like in our own budgets. I do a spending plan every month. Why do you do that? Well, because things go up every month, and I have to figure out how I'm gonna rob Peter to pay Paul. So that's how we have to do in government. We have to be able to say, okay, these are our needs, this is the money, these, this should be the tax, this provides for everybody. So I'm not, I'm not arguing here, I do agree with you that we're talking about compromise here. We're not, you never get in politics 100% of what you want. If you stand for that, you usually get nothing. And so we're talking about compromise, but we're talking about being considered of both sides. And the main thing, I guess I want to say, is I'm looking for waste. And when we take care of the waste, then we may have monies to pay our firefighters more. And if not, then we do a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who wants to speak to the council tonight? Council, it looks like everyone that has wanted to speak has spoken. What is your pleasure? All right, we are here, and thank you.